Basically, and so it burns diesel in a drum to heat air. So that you can run pipes down into the dig where you're working to keep stuff from freezing. Because if you're minus thirty, minus forty in a hole and it starts freezing, you're gonna wreck stuff even worse.
Did you use that on the fire hydrants?
No, that was our steamer.
Okay, because I found an interesting tool. I sat there and watched you guys use it. Isn't that different?
Yep, they're invaluable for when you... Yeah.
And that's an old piece of machinery?
I don't think the boiler's that old.
It's the truck underneath it?
Yeah, the trailer underneath, it's kind of home-built.
Okay. I think you had a description on it, Tom, those pictures there.
Yeah.
Everybody happy with that? All in favor? Carrie? Okay. Tax title property sale expenses.
Would you have to walk on there? Tax to our point?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, we are, we have... Oh, chip off. Twelve dash one is an invitation meeting to meet with the Sunshine Group. We'll have to set up a meeting sometime in February of the second week. And it'll be a special meeting.
And who's that?
Sunshine Group.
He's the one interested in...
I'm sorry.
He's interested in the content?
The content.
Because last meeting you asked me to contact him to set up a meeting with the council and friends of the company.
Yep. I just did another company name.
And it may be a special meeting. Okay, that's just for information, I guess. Twelve dot two is tax type property sale expenses. Basically, we want to rescind the motion twenty twenty dash six oh four. Can we read this?
Yeah.
Motion to rescind. Resolution twenty twenty dash six oh four.
You just need a motion.
And I would ensure, yeah, so I typed it out.
Seconda? Deanna? Any discussion?
Um...
That's all about what the paper said.
What's this though?
It was a...
It's the eligibility guy?
No, it's just the tax title property.
Tax title property.
That's where we're at right now.
Okay, I didn't get something out of it.
Oh, yes, you did.
Well, it might be in here, I just don't recall.
No, it was, it was emailed to you separately.
Oh, okay, I don't recall it. Can you summarize? Like what changed?
Okay, so what's this is about, okay? So we contacted from the family wanting to know if there's any money going back to the family.
Yep.
So, okay, so this particular document has all the stuff that you require. It tells you about how much the sales came to and how much the expenses are and what the profit and loss is.
Yeah, I remember seeing that.
And it's definitely a loss. And so, and there's a letter in there that you would've got sent with your other package from the lawyer explaining what the do's and the don'ts were, okay? So now, since I've been contacted by the family, we need to make a resolution that we can send this information onto the family to provide this sheet to the family. Okay?
Okay.
Is there...
So I don't have a problem with that, but why we send, where are we putting the money?
No, that was, we were putting it away.
For just a year, yeah.
And we're not doing that.
Okay. That's, that's my question, is why are we not doing it?
We don't have to.
We don't have to, no. Because we were putting it away because the act said that we were supposed to put that money away for a year.
For just a year, yeah, no, I understand.
For a year, but if you read the lawyer's letter, he states that actually you were to put the sales against the expenses and if there is a loss, so there is no money.
Okay.
Okay.
All two?
Just a clarification. Mayor, did you not tell us at one time that you had written off the taxes on that property? And if so, can we have to rescind that motion?
No, no, them are two different things. I'll explain that, okay, the tax incentive or the taxes, nobody did on it. So then it's gone. But the car was taken...
No, we tendered.
Yeah, we did, but we...
We tendered it out, it got sold.
Not in tax entitlement though?
Yes.
It's got sold later.
No, no, it was tendered out as tax title property.
Oh, really?
Yes.
After that length of time?
Yes, and it sold for three thousand five hundred eleven dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand that.
So you take that plus the sale of car and the expenses are, the outstanding taxes are in...
I understand that, I understand. I just wanna know, I was under the impression that you had written off the taxes previous to this in the last council.
I, I am too, I...
The property, that the taxes you have...
The first tax entitlement was over with.
I just wrote the taxes off after the sale of the house.
Well, after the sale of the house, okay.
They were written off because you have to give the house over if it's clear with no taxes.
So that's...
Nothing was written off because that is the purpose of, you have to...
So we did tax entitlement twice?
That's right.
No.
Yes.
No, we didn't.
The first one was a fifty dollar bid. And then the second time around was that?
No. We never had, that was never ever, you're talking about another property.
That was another property.
The boiler property?
Yes.
It was fifty dollars?
There was three, there were three properties that we were putting tax entitlement on.
Yeah.
Yep, and we had, we had a bid of fifty dollars on that one, we didn't accept it. So then we put it out again.
That's right.
And it came for thirty-five eleven.
Yeah, that's, that's what it happened with. But I just wanted to make sure.
That doesn't mean that you're rescinding the motion.
No.
Just means you have to put it for sale, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because you had refused, and the council had the right to refuse.
Yeah.
And as long as we don't get caught by somebody saying, "Ha, ha, you guys wrote off the taxes," therefore, you know, that type of thing, I just wondered, you know...
Because I know initially we, we put it out as tax property and the prices. Nobody except were willing to pay the taxes.
That's right.
So then we tendered, we bid it out, and then that was the bid that we got. Was that what you said?
We put out for tax entitlement and nobody, nobody grabbed it.
Nobody grabbed it.
Somebody put a bid in for fifty dollars and we didn't accept it the first time around.
That's right.
And the second time was... He lives right across the street.
Oh, no, that was included, that was included with this. There was, there was three.
Yeah.
There was three.
We did it once and then we did it again.
Oh, well, no, that was included with, with I just looked at the tender package. He was included.
And doesn't, like you say, it doesn't matter, I mean, it's...
And we just wanted to make sure.
Which I thought...
I just wanted to make sure we wouldn't get caught, somebody coming back and saying, "Oh, you wrote off the taxes, therefore, the money goes to the family." So that's not the case.
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, the taxes were only written off after, when I came back. I wrote them off.
Yeah.
I wrote ninety-five thousand dollars off the tax title property.
So they're being sold. Now, we also have some other pieces of items that have hit, right?
There is some items that are sitting there, yes, that were in the garage.
You're giving them back?
Well, I can mention that in the letter.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes, that there is stuff that's there that they certainly can come and pick it up.
Yeah. Okay, did we have a motion on seconda on that?
No, we didn't have that.
I think I'm going to rescind it.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, that was, that was supposed to be done.
Yeah, I thought we...
So, yeah.
The discussion is out of the motion, seconda.
Yes. But we didn't make a motion. We didn't make a motion to rescind. To rescind the resolution. But now we need a resolution to send the, to send the family that's...
Okay.
Is that the one you made the sound?
Y'all make the motion to rescind the resolution and we did both the...
You did that, right?
We need a resolution by a letter.
Oh, you made the motion that we sent the letter out to the town.
And we not need a seconda or a vote on that, rescind it?
Yeah, no, we, yeah, we have a second, no, no, he, he made the motion, so somebody else is seconda.
Okay, the rescinded resolution was Sam made the motion, Deanna seconded it.
And we passed it.
And we passed it.
Okay. Now, this motion is to send a letter.
Andre making that motion.
And seconda? Teresa?
Sir.
Any more discussion on it? Basically, I want you to add the material.
Yes, yes, yes.
All in favor? Carrie? Okay. Twelve dot four is landfill capacity survey. It's a report from Public Works.
I will make a motion for option two.
Okay. Andre and seconda? All? Okay, discussion.
Yeah, I'll just read out the options for the public. Did the council approve a landfill capacity survey in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars before taxes so that it can be submitted to the proper authorities required from the landfill inspection in full twenty twenty?
Okay, who's getting the fourteen thousand dollars? What company?
I'll look, keep going down the pages there. It's probably Saskatchewan Fire Department.
It's Concentric Geosciences is the person...
That did the job initially.
Yeah, they do, they do all of, all of our landfill work.
Okay, so they continue, good, thank you.
And they are set up for Monday, the January eleventh here unless they're told no.
And there's actually eight actions that are gonna happen over a time period?
Uh, there was eight actions found in the inspection and it's attached here. I've done most of them. So...
Yeah, that's pretty good.
All right. Dustin will keep us informed if we're ready.
And what's the next step after the survey?
Uh, the survey is, they crunch the numbers. Uh, they will either submit it to me and I can submit it to the environment or they will submit it to the environment automatically for us. Our permit to operate is coming up due and so they are needing to know if there is physical room in that landfill or not. And as well, this survey will potentially give us the information of whether, of some viable future options for that landfill.
Okay, so they do have some options.
Yeah, because if, if it's determined that the landfill isn't full yet, then we can hopefully get another five years out of it. Or if they determine that a compactor would be beneficial, the cost would outweigh the deficit of it, uh, we might get ten or fifteen years out of it, who knows? Before we're forced to close it.
We can go compactor, shredder, incinerator, if that's even a possibility, I don't even know that.
The incinerator would be ideal, I guess. Uh, the landfill would close with an incinerator, but, um, an incinerator would be ideal, but the environment doesn't seem to be doing much with them. I, I keep trying to talk to people about them, but the government doesn't want much to do with them, it seems.
But a compactor you'd have to dig up?
Ideally, yeah, if you had a compactor, you would take half of the landfill and push it onto the other half. And then when you're working back up, you would slope the edges properly so that if, at closing date, they're sloped properly and then you can just put your clay cap on it and, uh, because the way it is right now, they're way too steep and they will have to be physically moved to the next crater at the point of...
The compactor, will they allow us to take out the cement while we are digging it up?
Uh, there's been discussion with the environment about that. They, uh, say we can remove the concrete as long as we remove the rebar from it on site.
Okay.
Um, but we haul away all the steel once or twice a year as well, so, um, there's that.
Okay.
Um, so we likely could at the same time remove the concrete.
What kind of distance, depth do you think you would go if, if we were given that option?
You would go to about one or two feet above the ground level because I don't know if there was a pit under there or not. But I don't think, you would go down twelve to fourteen feet, but beyond that would be, you wouldn't gain much by going any lower than that. With the, with the compaction that happens there, it's pretty minimal with a tract piece of equipment versus those big compactors, so...
And this basically is to do with if we have to start hauling our garbage to another site. And there's costs, we were talking a hundred dollars a ton at the site?
Yeah.
Plus, plus transportation?
Yeah.
So Dustin, have you done all, you done all that research on that project?
I've done a lot, yeah.
Right, okay.
I've always, I'm, I'm not sure it's a, it's a, it's a good thought, but I've always thought as far as community and getting help to have an add-on committee sometimes. And, uh, you know, if there was a four or five people in community who were really interested in landfill and just so that you had, maybe that makes, makes your work more credible, maybe not. But I've always wondered about ad hoc committees on so many big things.
Well, Teresa's on the Public Works, we're on Public Works, mostly.
No, it comes under your umbrella, but it, but it's not like having an act committee that's just strictly landfill, who just kind of really researches that with Dustin and just is there to, I mean, it's just an idea.
Yeah.
One of the reasons for her, she's interested in the, in the dump site and the environmental.
But maybe there's more people that are interested.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I don't want to dump on you right now, but...
She's in life for me.
I was just wondering about that, Dustin, you know, that...
There was the...
Because that's a big project.
Yeah, there was the mention previous, uh, I'm not sure if it was at a Public Works meeting or a council meeting, but forming a committee specifically to deal with the landfill under the Public Works, under the supervision, basically, of the Public Works Committee, I believe it was. But, yeah, it's, it's not a small project.
Yeah.
And...
It would be nice to share a work of...
If you want, at the next meeting, we could break up and create a committee.
Yeah.
And go from there.
We...
And work with Dustin.
You wouldn't mind that?
Nope.
Great.
And bring out the Public Works then?
Yeah, we could do that and then... All right, uh, okay, we had a seconda on that already? And we're done speaking, all in favor? Carrie? SASS Water Works Quality Assurance. Do we need a resolution on this?
We need a resolution, right?
This just needs received and filed. I think this is the one.
A lot of changes to this thing, huh? I mean, some businesses on this, others are missing and...
Yeah, there's some blank cases and addresses.
So SASS Water, Water Works Quality Assurance?
Yeah. Can we have a motion on it first, if there's twelve dot four?
Yeah, okay, I thought it was going to be received and filed, but you want to make a motion?
Well, the motion received and filed.
Oh, okay.
And then we have a seconda?
I'll do it. Deanna? Discussion?
Well, if I may, Your Honor, here, uh, it talks here about, uh, you know, the mayor and the REEves signing off on this thing. Is the RM at all involved? Have they ever been involved in any discussions before that you know?
No, but they want to.
They want to be, oh, yeah. So you will have this...
Deal with those groups.
Well, have the REEves, yeah, okay. I was just wondering, because, you know, it says the REEves and I've never seen the REEves involved in anything. But the RM's willing, does the council? But the, the RM is willing to get involved?
Well, I'm not gonna say the RM, I deal with those groups.
Those groups, well, then we have to try to find out what to do with the REEves and council. Mayor, REEves and council. It's kind of interesting, I don't know.
But, yeah, maybe we should, maybe we should contact the RM and make them aware of this.
They didn't get it, one of these?
I don't know if they...
SASS Water would have likely sent them one of this. This is basically a SASS Water document. And, uh, so they are supposed to kind of update it with my help, basically, uh, for the town aspect and then if they're, with the stuff regarding the RM in it, it would be between SASS Water and the RM, but I don't see why it would be an issue for the town to talk to the RM.
I think they kind of made a move, when it says Mayor, REEves and Council of the Town of Gravelburg, I don't know whether the REEves are supposed to be there.
But I, I think they're assuming it's covering municipal rules as well. So I think it's important that we contact the RM and ask them if they're, they've got a copy of this document and if they could please deal with, approve it on their end. And maybe we should get together and work on it.
Because it should've said Mayor and Council of Town of Gravelburg and the REEves and Council of the RM.
Yeah, good point.
No, I get my problem.
Is, is that the same document you're looking at that has, um, let me find it here, on table three of Gravelburg Water Works Media Contacts?
Uh, well... What page is that on?
There's just a little thing on it that says table three, it's towards the...
Well, it's in the top beginning, basically.
Anyway, the, the one that says table three, it, um, says the media contacts, the radio, the television, newspaper. Uh, I don't listen to the radio, I don't have a TV and the only newspaper I see is the Gravelburg Tribune. So if there's an emergency about the water, I won't get it through any of their media sites.
Are you, are you on the emergency plan?
I think you're on the emergency list.
It says SASS Water Emergency Plan.
They're not on that yet.
They're not on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. So that's where I am. I don't know the other one.
This is basically telling us...
The policy, though. Gotcha.
And can we update the, you know, the information? Like I said, quite updated.
Yeah, who's David, Eric, Eric Aldris?
Oh, yeah, he's gone, fully thrown out.
Yeah, that's where they're...
That's probably the one area that needs to be updated with the new CBO.
Yeah. Their contact info.
Um, as far as, uh, uh, who's involved with, uh, the SASS Water, they probably have updated or will be updating that one, who would be...
I would be responsible for updating the, the town information on this form and, uh, I guess it's my fault that I didn't before sending it to the meeting here.
So you think when it says Mayor, REEves and Council of Town of Gravelburg, do you think they were including the RM or...
I think that's an accidental addition. I, I don't believe SASS Water Services anything in the RM, so...
Well, no, there are a lot of rural residents that are up to our system.
But it might have something to do with, yeah, which are...
By...
Right.
In the water line.
The water.
So those, those groups are definitely wanted, but I'm not saying the RM is. But I have no problem you sending this off to the RM.
Yeah, okay, so I, I see what you're saying, okay, we deal with the groups, not necessarily the RM.
This isn't our document, this is SASS Water.
SASS Water, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, council already mentioned that, yeah. Okay, well, that's, that's good, that's good. It's a pretty interesting one, okay.
Okay. All in favor? Carrie? Okay, thirteen dot one is SASS Water, Water Works Emergency Response Plan.
Yeah, that needs an offer on the board. Check out a few things there. Who would be responsible for updating this stuff? Maybe the other council?
Well, Dustin, Dustin should look at that.
It's, uh, between me and SASS Water. Um, I would update the town information and they would update the SASS Water information.
So maybe Dustin, you could put on that then, under table three, to also include social media? Whether it's on Facebook or, or the Gravelburg Facebook site or something like that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Uh, yeah, we for sure could.
And then I'll put the door to open.
Yeah, we normally do door-to-door website, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Dustin, I'll give you, I'll give you a couple of name changes and phone numbers in addition to that list here, table one. That I think, uh, you could include, so... Speaker? The contact number and companies in that, contact names?
You know, actually, within a couple of weeks, we should have some chief of ministry officers.
Yeah, well, he doesn't know and...
Is, is there a cell phone for that position? Like, will the cell phone number change as well? Because it says, it's got a cell phone, but no label.
Is your cell phone ready?
Well, yes, the, they, there is a cell phone for the CEO.
We'll be hard if somebody can do it.
Okay with that?
Yeah.
All in favor? Carrie? Thirteen dot two is Fire Dispatch Contract two thousand twenty-one.
Same guy. We didn't have the first one.
Oh, we didn't, because I asked you.
But no, we only have the first and second and third one.
Okay, let's go back to the Water Works Emergency Response. Motion, we, we discussed it before, I think, the motion for the second one. Raymond? Seconda? Sam, how Andre?
Yeah, sort of.
Okay, discussion's over with, all in favor? Okay, thirteen dot two is Fire Dispatch Contract twenty twenty-one.
That's basically nine one one.
Well, it's to do, yeah, but this is to do with the Fire Dispatch Service, this particular contract, okay?
Yeah.
Which is, you're right, it's to do with nine one one.
So this is all on, like, it's not in the... You have to, you have to sign that every year?
Yep, yep, so we just, we just need a motion to, since you already signed it.
Well, we're just making that motion.
Okay, great, and motion?
I'll second it.
Andre seconded, and discussion is, anything more? All in favor? The motion for you to sign, right?
Huh?
The motion is for you to sign.
For me, yes. For this council, yes.
Thirteen by three is the Gravelburg Air Shuttle Service. They are requesting some assistance in their pamphlets. Bearing a cost of about fifty dollars if they, if we get it downstairs.
What's the cost?
Fifty dollars.
I will make that motion.
Seconda? All? Discussion?
Do we have, uh, anybody from council that's involved in that, in the people we don't have? Do we have council or... Just as drivers, like, there's the three?
Yeah.
And the rest of us are just veterans? I just don't... Because my question is, uh, we've made some sizable contributions. You know, first one was very sizable.
Yeah.
Putting in flexible, uh, you know, like, since, I just wondered if it's not to our, to our advantage of the council, have somebody that, I would love to know what the economics of that is.
Yeah, it doesn't pay attention.
No, but you don't want to set up something that every time you need something, you're coming back to town council. Even for fifty dollars.
Yeah.
That means, that means that there's not, you know, I'm trying to think of what could be in the bank or whatever. But I'm just wondering why we don't have somebody from council that sits on the board, they have a board.
Who was on that?
I didn't believe it was just committee, I know I read on the initial...
Ben Holmes, Linda Roberts, Betty Hawkins, that was the three, wasn't it?
Yeah, but in the initial meetings, I was depending on those. When it was first one in the... Because we usually have a vested interest.
Well, at one point, well, the Watkins.
Well, for Watkins, to sit on this.
No, I'm discussing it now, I'm discussing it.
Oh, I thought.
And maybe you, whatever you guys think, but I just, what I'm, what I'm thinking is, is that, uh, you know, and I realize it's not set up to make money. But you sure would like to stay close to that line, you know?
All they do of funders is every year, I think, put that up, maybe every year.
I know COVID is, uh. Yeah. But I mean, what the hospital did.
Is here now, this year.
Yeah, what the hospital did is said, okay, we can't have, you know, festival trees this year and so they send out letters. You know, when the media are raised, like, I think what, what I'm thinking about is that it really seems that whatever group we have, it's better as much as they can within the group to raise the money than you.
Yeah.
You know, because otherwise, we know what's gonna happen. So that's, I was just wondering about that.
Every, every portion of the town, I guess, is in that same boat. They're not really an arm of the town. They're, they're helping the town, or helping the people of the town.
And prior to COVID, like, there was a number of fundraising intensive work, but COVID really.
Yeah.
No, I, I understand all that, but it's just the fact that I think, I think what we're trying to say to each other is, is that if there's ways to do fundraising and some people are finding ways to do it. So, uh, otherwise, you have to go to somebody else in the community and ask for help.
Yeah.
And, uh, it worries, it worries me if it's just fifty dollars, it's needed.
Yeah.
That worries me that how little money there must be there.
Yeah.
No cushion at all, yeah, I see what you're saying.
And I, and I just think, you know, that it's, it's to our best interest to try to help to make sure that a business, you know, you know the idea of a business. And I don't know if they would appreciate if somebody constantly involved, but just kind of correct this, they're, they're not asking for fifty, you know, the idea of a donation of fifty dollars, what they're asking is just to be able to use, be able to use the printer. And if I understand the cost, what you're saying, Sue, is for printing that, that would be roughly what it costs.
Correct.
Doing that, so it's not, I'm, I'm not reading here that we are covering that, what, what I'm reading is, is like, we can still charge them the fifty dollars, what I'm reading in this letter is they want to be able to use our printer.
So they might even donate.
Yeah.
But donate the printer?
Donate the use of your printer.
The use of the printer, right.
To photocopy for a fifty.
But would that mean also like D K?
Yes.
The county?
So normally what it is, the rate is that we have set up is for, for organizations, if it's black and white, one sided, it's five cents. You know, so I just kind of estimated they want four hundred and fifty, so that's what. But usually when it's colored and it's two-sided, it usually is a little bit more, you know, but still, um, that's, but they're asking for a donation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I did that on my printer with my color slots, I would probably pay a lot more, just in my ink.
But there are commercial places available that they can get the service done, they just pay half, uh, have it done with newspaper or something.
Or a poll.
Yeah, that's right.